It's seven o'clock and I'm going to call this regular meeting to order. Would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is roll call. Kristi?
We have a quorum with five councilors present. Councilors Johnson and Stefano has previously requested to be excused.
Thank you. Next up is the agenda approval. We've got our city manager who has a couple of words to say on this.
After discussing the item with our city attorney, I'd like to recommend that we amend the agenda to include an update on negotiation options related to the motorway building. The motorway building?
Where is it? You're going to put that up?
In a closed session at the end. Thank you. I did not make that clear.
Thank you, Heather. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda, Kristi? That we know of?
If not, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda as amended, excusing Councilor Johnson, Councilor Stefano.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council. Next up, we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. Do we have any citizen comment at this point in time? Judy? Come on up, please. I don't have a card for you, but please come up to the podium and identify yourself and your address, please, for the record.
My name is Judy Allen and my address is 9273 County Road 2 South, Alamosa.
Thank you. Go right ahead. Did you want to tell us something?
Yes, I'm just here to, on behalf of the tennis community in our town, and I hope that we can get something done for our tennis courts because this is going on our second end of the summer that we haven't been able to play on courts. And we would appreciate if we could keep maintaining our courts that cost us so much money in the beginning of this, in the early 90s. And we'd appreciate it and just believe and trust that it can get done. Thank you.
Thank you. That will be under regular business number four. We'll be talking about that this evening. All right. Next up is consent calendar A. The consent calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have C-2A, received June 2014 expenditure report, C-7A, approved minutes of the regular meeting for July the 2nd of 2014, and C-8A, received June 14th monthly reports. Are there any questions or comments, Council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Start voting, please. Sorry. There you go. Am I missing one? Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council. Next up, we'll move on to regular business. Business brought forward by city staff. First up is Public Works. Alamosa County, request for fee relief. Thank you, Pat.
Good evening, guys. We have a pretty straightforward request tonight. As you know, the county has begun construction on the new terminal at the airport. And as an economic development and governmental partner, they are requesting the fee relief from the normal permitting fees associated with that construction. And we have Ken Vanowarden and Carol Osborne are here from the county if you have any questions, or I would be able to answer anything specific to the numbers.
Thank you, Pat. Council, do we have any questions of Pat or Mr. Vanowarden or Carol?
Mayor, I don't have any questions, but just a couple of comments that the hard work that both of them are doing to put this project together and finally, it was kind of delayed there for about oh, 30 days or so, and now we're finally starting to move forward and you'll see some action out there where we'll finally be able to build a really nice terminal out there.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else? Jan?
Yes, I had a question. When will the new terminal be done?
Two hundred and fifty-five days from... That sounds like a confident answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Mr. Gillespie?
I see the building permit is at $6,647.50 and the tap fee's at $950, correct?
Yes.
So total waiver is $7,597.50?
Yes. Yes, and the tap fee is... There was some confusion on the way I worded that. I should have made it more clear that it's an upsized fee, basically. They're not making any new taps. They're just, they're replacing one with another. The old tap was a three-quarter inch. The new one, according to the plans, will be a one-inch. So the difference, the difference in tap size is what that fee is.
I think the city's always been willing to work with the county on these projects. I think we've waivered all of the fees so far, so I think that's good for the city and good for the county and saves the taxpayers additional expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else?
With that, Mayor, then I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the request for fee reliefs for the Alamosa County.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Council, start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Next up, we have city clerk, municipal court, resolution number eight, 2014, resolution adopting Title I in order to participate in the coordinated election on November 4th, 2014. Kristi?
This, or the city has one ballot issue for the November election, and that is the SID for the Carroll subdivision. And in order to participate, we have to adopt Title I, and this resolution will do that. And once we do that, we'll get an IGA with the county to be in election, and that'll probably be on the next meeting.
Thank you, Kristi. Council, we have any questions or comments? Not only entertain a motion.
If there's no other discussion, I motion we approve resolution adopting Title I in order to participate in the coordinated election on November 4th, 2014.
Second? Thank you. I have a motion and a second on resolution number eight, 2014. Start voting, Council. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council. Next up, we have Parks and Recreation, award of bid on the tennis court resurfacing. Thank you, Heinz.
Evening, councilors. At State Street Packer, this is the opportunity to award the bid for the tennis court resurfacing, both at Carroll and at Boyd Parks, two All Seasons tennis courts in the amount of $43,090. As you saw, we had two bidders. We sent out the bids to seven prospective companies. Three were interested and two submitted bids. The, as you can tell, there's a wide disparity between the two bids. And just to let you know that both the bidders, they're on the USTA recommended contractor list. All Seasons goes ahead and serves both Colorado, Utah, and Wyoming. Both bidders submitted a 5% bid bond with their bid, so they're both serious bidders. We looked at the references from All Seasons, and they were very good. In fact, one of the recommendations came from the Rocky Mountain Tennis Club up by Boulder. It's a private club. Other references that we found were the Colorado College, School District 20, CU Boulder, the City of Wheatridge, and the City of Aurora. So we feel confident that this vendor can complete the job at hand. I've spoken to him personally and we corresponded through email. He knows exactly what needs to be done. I expressed the concern from Renner that they wanted to do more milling on the concrete, and he felt it was not necessary. And we tend to agree with him. I think this is going to be more of a municipal court than a competition court, which I'm thinking that's where Renner's going.
Thank you, Heinz. Council, do we have any questions of Heinz? Councilor Coleman?
Yes, thanks, Heinz.
Yeah.
I heard quite a bit today and over the past few days from citizens in the tennis community in regards to the resurfacing of those tennis courts. My question is, what else is included in this cost other than just the resurfacing? Because I went out to both sites today, and I noticed that the Boyd Court doesn't have any nets. And I'm wondering, are there other features included other than resurfacing?
Sure. The, as you know, it's also Carroll. That's probably our biggest concern is the Far West Court on the south side. That's got some pottin' in the concrete and stuff. So that included would be acrylic filler that we put in. They're going to be responsible for taking off all the residue that's left on the concrete that the Parks staff took off last year. Etching the surface, power wash it, they're going to put the primer down, acrylic primer, then another acrylic resurfacer and color coats. Also, they're doing the normal lines for doubles court and also tanned and under courts for the youth. And basically, they're doing that at Boyd and then two courts at Carroll Park. So basically, on the youth courts, you'll have, they'll be perpendicular to the regular playing, so you have two courts on each court for them. Nets, that's responsibility of the city. We do that all the time along with the wind screens.
Are there, are they including anything that will add some type of padding or cushion between the concrete and all the surface to help with the joints on people if they're playing out there?
No, it'll be straight acrylic coatings on top of concrete, and that's the normal setup unless you really go very expensive, and then you add the cushioning underneath, which we don't feel is going to be necessary here.
You don't feel it's going to be necessary?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coleman. Councilor Gillespie?
Yeah, Heinz, do I understand that we're only doing two courts at Carroll?
We're doing all five courts, four Carroll and one at Boyd. That's what the bid includes.
Is the finished prep at Carroll, will that be comparable to the finish that Renner Sports would have done, other than taking it down below the concrete?
Yes, it's the same, basically same principle. They apply the primer, the color coats, the lines. It's all acrylic. It's all going to be sand-based to control the speed of the ball. So they're comparable.
So all the asphalt that's on there right now will be removed?
Yes.
And it will be a flat surface?
Yes.
Will that have any milling at all or just, how do they get it down to the concrete?
On All Seasons, he said they use diamond brushes on floor buffers and stuff, and they go through there and they, it's some grilling, milling, you know, because of diamonds, they will tear it up just enough to get the residue off.
Okay.
But we feel with the acrylic filler and the prime coat, that will pretty much smooth out a lot of the so-called high spots and then make it pretty level for the most part.
Thank you, Councilor Gillespie. Councilor Gregel?
Heinz, can you kind of give us maybe a little history of what's been going on here? Because there's been a lot of concern that there's been neglect out there. The funds are being switched to other programs. So I think it's only fair to give out what exactly happened and why these courts got in these positions and why these people haven't been able to use these courts.
Originally, whenever the courts were built, they were built on post-tension concrete, and they put asphalt on top and then put surfacing material on top of that. Nowadays, that's not done. And the main reason is that because the oil emulsifiers will start to dissipate and go away, just like any roadway, it'll start shrinking and start cracking. The last few years, we've, the Parks guy before last year, did some patching. We bought the material and they filled up the cracks as best they could in lieu of having to do the complete resurface. Last year, we put the bid out for the resurface. The company that got the bid, he came out several times, helped us along, and then for whatever reason, he still hasn't told us why, he did not sign the contract and refused to do it. So that's why we're here today rebidding it out. That's why we put the 5% performance, the bond, bid bond on it, that only serious bidders would participate. Money-wise, there was $20,000 allotted last year. That money was not spent. It went back into the reserves, and then as of today, we're asking to pull that back out as an unbudgeted item and then use the savings from several of our projects this year to complete the difference of $23,000.
Moving forward as well, I'd like to add, we've had some discussions with some representatives from the tennis community, and one of their concerns was to do better on the maintenance side of it. And obviously, this is an expense. And so Heinz and I talked about, as we're trying to improve our CIP process, of making sure to have that be a regular five-to-seven-year type of anticipated cost to make sure we're doing a better job of maintaining the courts, the investment that the city's made in them.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel. Councilor Jan?
Yeah, Heinz, I have two questions for you. How, if, how long would the All Seasons court last? How many years as opposed to the Renner Sports?
They're both typical. They're both the same. It's still the same, basically the same product. So we're looking at five to seven years is what's normal. They only guarantee them for no more than two. So depending on how harsh the weather is here and the sun, it dictates how fast the, how it fades and stuff, you know, and the sand that goes in and how much play gets on it. So I'd figure within about five years, you're looking at just doing a top recoat, not a total recoat all the way down to the concrete. So that's much more, you know, cost savings there than having to do the whole thing from the concrete up.
Okay, thank you. And then whoever gets the bid, how long would it take them to get the project done?
We put in there no later than September 30th.
Is there, if, is there any way that could be bumped up a little bit?
In the bid, that's what we've specified. Now, if they get it in sooner, it's fine. It's a matter of scheduling for them to get it down here and do it because they're out from the east side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Behill. Councilor Coleman?
Yes, Heinz, when I looked at the difference between both of the bids, I went online and tried to do some research to find out as much as I could about both of the companies who are placing in the bids. The Rainier Sports surface, they had a pretty good internet presence, but I was having challenges, challenging issues trying to find a lot of resources on All Seasons tennis courts. Can you tell me a little bit about their history and some of the work that they've done in the past and why they would probably be a good fit for our city?
Sure. As you can tell by the bid difference, I mean, Renner Sports is a premier sport court resurfacer, so there's going to be some little extra money just in having them in their name. Yes, All Seasons doesn't have a website per se. They did give us, like I said, the references to what they've done in the state, and they're familiar. The USTA recognizes them, and also, they service three states. So, and the, like I said, the Rocky Mountain Tennis Club, they've used them for a number of years, and they're very happy with them.
Can you do the list again of the references that were provided for All Seasons, please?
We've got the Colorado School of Blind and Deaf, Colorado College, School District 20, Colorado Springs, CU Boulder, the Rocky Mountain Tennis Center, which is in Boulder. They have 15 tennis courts up there. It's a private club. City of Wheatridge and City of Aurora.
And based on those references, you feel comfortable with this company?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coleman. Councilor Gregel?
One more question. Is there play on this now, on the courts? Are they able to play on there?
I mean, of course, it's a lot different what it used to be. Right now, we have the youth tennis classes going on. There's two courts that are netted over at Carroll. They are usable. They're not the best, but they're usable. Yes, your tennis balls are going to get dirty after some play, but it's still, you can still bat the ball around there. We put some lines down to where the old lines used to be. And so, yes, you can play on it.
I guess my concern is that there goes another season, I guess, that these people have gone through and have to deal with this problem. So hopefully, we can get this corrected, and hopefully, these people can get down here as soon as possible.
I agree with you. Yeah, you know, that's one of the things about the temperature-wise, you take a look at the acrylics and stuff, it's 15 degrees and above. So, you know, we're, we have a short window. I mean, May, we're still freezing, so it's, we're in that timeframe right now to get it done.
Thank you, Heinz.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel. I do have a concern about, like Councilor Coleman, there's quite a discrepancy between the bids, and you'd almost think something is not on the up and up here. But if you're comfortable with that, I think the only thing that would really concern me is the longevity of the surface that these folks are going to be playing on. Because we've been through this once before and even before that. So we have had issues, and so are we going to hold these people's feet to the fire when it comes to performance of the surface in case it doesn't hold up like we want it to or we've contracted for?
Sure, that would be part of the contract that we'll be signing here shortly. Warranty-wise, I mean, there's only a limited warranty that nobody will warranty five, seven years. I mean, it just, that's a reality. We'll just have to keep in mind, you know, in the, from going on forward, you know, we're not having to deal with asphalt anymore, which adds a big chunk of problems, as we found out. It's just, it's a matter of just repainting is what it comes down to in the future.
So our city manager says the maintenance of that is also very important, so we're going to be diligent about that, I'm sure. Thank you, Heinz.
Yes. And just to let you know, the biggest difference is in the milling. I mean, between Renner, prepping the surface was 10 times more expensive for Renner than it was for All Seasons.
Thank you, Heinz. Council, do we have any more questions or from Heinz? Councilor Behill?
Thank you, Mayor. Heinz, what Heather mentioned, maintenance, what does that look like?
For when the new court comes on, it's basically make sure the, we're going to do some changes in the irrigation, make sure the water doesn't get onto the courts whatsoever, putting a dead zone, basically, border around the tennis courts, making sure that the Parks staff goes over there a little more frequently, make sure, you know, what dirt or pebbles or rocks, whatever that gets brought in, gets blown off, and that will extend the life of the playing surface itself.
Thank you.
The other part of the maintenance is, as Heinz talked, depending on the sun, the weather, all of that, the surface should last five to seven years. So we're going to, beginning at year five, make sure from a CIP perspective, we have the amount that would be needed to resurface it. If you don't stay up on that, then you can start to create problems sometimes below the surface, and that's sort of what we ran into before as well, in addition to having the asphalt underneath and those issues. So making sure we have those planning principles in place would be good.
Thank you, Councilor Behill. Councilor Gillespie?
Yes, all the emails I've received have just asked that we complete the project. And I think Heather and Heinz have made it clear that we tried to complete this project last year, and through no fault of the city, it was not completed. We have every intention of completing this process, and hopefully, we can get that solved tonight and get a quality product. I think, I think that's what everyone wants, is a quality product. So check out the references. If they're good, we have the same set of specs for both contractors, and the surface prep is good. I think we owe it to the taxpayers to save that $55,000. So that's how I feel.
Thank you, Councilor Gillespie. Councilor Coleman?
Yeah, Heinz, I wanted to think, one of the citizens brought up to me, I believe at some point, there was a wall to where a person could hit the ball off of in practice. Is that going to be rebuilt again?
Yes.
It will be?
It'll be back, yeah, it'll be put back onto the court, yes.
Okay.
It's a popular item.
I'd just like to add to the note that Councilman Gillespie said that, you know, the tennis community has spoken and they made their voices heard, and what they're looking for is someplace that's decent, safe, and also playable. So I think from hearing this information that you provided, that this bid is going to allow for those issues to be addressed, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Coleman. Councilor Gregel?
Well, if there's no other further questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we award a bid to All Seasons tennis courts in the amount of $43,090.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not start voting, Council. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Council. Next up, we'll move on to city manager and legal. We've got a public hearing on ordinance number seven, 2014, and ordinance approving two intergovernmental agreements with the Colorado Department of Public Safety, the Colorado State Patrol, to provide radio dispatch service to the Alamosa Police Department and the Alamosa Fire Department based on the dispatch fee schedules set by the Colorado Legislature. And a public hearing on ordinance number eight, 2014, and ordinance approving intergovernmental agreement with the Alamosa School District to provide a school resource officer for the Alamosa Police Department, from the Alamosa Police Department to the Alamosa School District. And C, a first reading on ordinance number nine, 2014, and ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium to the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any new special use applications for the operation of telecommunications facilities within the city of Alamosa until after November 30th, 2014, and declaring the city's intention to consider the development of appropriate regulations for the issuance of such permits. Heather or...
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we will, we will need to deal with each one of these items separately. So the first one is ordinance seven, 2014. This approves two intergovernmental agreements for providing dispatch services, one to the state, or one from the State Patrol to the Police Department, and the other from the State Patrol to the Fire Department. The Police Department is a much more expensive contract because they receive a much higher volume of calls. The apportionment of costs under the two contracts is directly related to the percentage of total statewide volume of calls that each agency takes up. So the Police Department's percentage is higher than the Fire Department's, although still, I'm sure, very low percentage of overall state volume of dispatch calls. I don't know if there's further discussion needed. This is the way we've been doing dispatch services from time immemorial, and I don't believe we're set to provide any alternative on our own, so it's kind of the only game in town.
Thank you, Eric. And with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number seven, 2014. Any of, anyone in the audience for or against, please step to the podium. Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset, Alamosa, anytime you can get all these agencies, State Patrol, City, County, Fire, you want to do it. What goes on? Everybody wants their own thing. Nobody wants to share anything, and boy, do the taxpayers take it in the shorts over that. Work together, especially what's going on today in our country. There's so much violence here, but remember, compared to the rest of the world, we're choirboys. Thank you, Mr. McCann. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance number seven, 2014, and bring it to Council for discussion or a motion.
Well, if there's no further questions...
I've got a question.
I've got a question. I don't know who's addressing this. Is this Eric? I understand that this, uh, contract has added slight savings to the previous one. Is that correct?
Right, I think, uh, Chief Oaks had mentioned at the last meeting that our costs went down. And again, it's, it's purely a proportion of statewide costs, so it's not anything that got negotiated, it's just the way it turned out.
And, and I think it's also important to note that, uh, we are, uh, being let out of this contract six months early, the previous one. Is that what it says here?
This one, right, this, the previous contract was to run through the end of this year. The state has tried to change around the contracting period such that it goes on their fiscal year. That's the only reason for that, but we won't have two contracts running concurrently. This one will supersede the existing one.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Anyone else?
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance number seven, 2014. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, please. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel. Eric?
The next item is, uh, ordinance number blank on my thing, so.
Eight?
Thank you, ordinance number eight, 2014. This is, uh, to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Alamosa School District whereby the city and the school district split the cost of a school resource officer who is stationed primarily at the high school, but also present at Ortega Middle School and at the Alamosa Elementary School. Chief Oaks presented a little bit on this on the past, uh, meeting. This is a program that initially started with a grant and I think both entities, the city and the school district, have found it beneficial to continue. And I know, uh, Captain Jackson is here. If you have any questions, to address it to him about how successful that program is. But I, because I can't really speak to it, uh, but I do know that the Police Department is behind it.
Thank you, Eric. And with that, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number eight, 2014. All those in favor or against, please step up to the podium. Make your wishes known. Seeing none, I will, uh, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number eight, 2014 and bring it back to Counsel for discussion or a motion. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, I have one question. It says a cost share, is that a 50-50 split or how is that split?
Uh, yeah, that's, it's a 50-50 split on the officer's salary.
Okay, very good, thank you.
With limited to, I think it's $50,000 total, so $25,000 for each entity.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Coleman?
I just have a comment. I just think that anytime that we can improve the relationship with our, uh, law enforcement office and the school and get more kids involved in different educational programs that's gonna help prevent drug use or any type of criminal activity is a great thing for the city of Alamosa.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Counselor Hill?
Yes, I had a question, maybe Captain Jackson can answer. Is this, uh, officer, is he, uh, present at sporting events or school-sponsored events for, uh, crowd control and issues like that?
Thank you for being here, Captain Jackson.
Sure, thanks, thanks for having me. He is, uh, he works, um, a deal with the school, so to adjust his, uh, schedule. So if he needs to hold over for, um, you know, um, any special school activity, he can do that. And he can just adjust his schedule to do that and seems to work out very well. So, uh, ballgames, things like that, he can adjust. And I might add that, you know, the, we kind of get the better end of that deal because we get him all summer. So, uh, it's, it's really, it, um, does work out. We, we save the, his class times, uh, training, whatever he needs and his vacations, things like that, so he can take those in the summertime. But he is now a fully certified SRO, so, uh, seems to work. I haven't seen the numbers lately, I think Christie could probably attest to some of that, but they, um, it, it is really beneficial for us to have that officer in the schools. Uh, we don't have to run out there and cover all those calls and we can look at those calls for services, actually gone way down. So just an officer's presence out there, I know people don't want a security guard out there, but, uh, he has really fit into that, um, that whole program very well and I think it's a beneficial program.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. Counselor Greg?
I just wanna echo, uh, Councilman Coleman's remarks. This is a good program and I think it's, the Police Department has worked greatly with the, uh, school district on this and, like I say, the sooner that we get the students involved with our Police Department and, and get that, I don't know so much camaraderie, but I, uh, some kind of, uh, communication going, I think the better. In the later years, it, it helps with, with the whole process of the crime and stuff.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Captain Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Greg. And thank you, Captain Jackson. And with that, um, bring it back to Counsel for decision.
I motion we approve ordinance number eight, 2014, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Alamosa School District to provide a school resource officer from the Alamosa Police Department to the Alamosa School District.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Counsel? If not, start voting, please. Thank you, Counsel. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item up is ordinance number nine, 2014. This is up for a first reading. And this is an ordinance addressing telecommunications facilities, usually those being cell towers, uh, on, eh, on a, on a basis for establishing rules and regulations that would govern those. Currently, there is only one zoning classification in the city under which cell towers are allowed as a permitted use and that's industrial. And there are other cell tower locations that cell tower companies want to locate, uh, within the city in primarily commercial, uh, business and, uh, business light. And those locations allow for cell towers on a special, uh, special review basis. The city does not have any guidelines or rules or regulations that would govern siting of such towers or kinds of landscaping or other matters that really ought to be considered. And so when the Planning Commission and then the City Council consider these special review applications for cell towers or other telecommunications facilities, the only guidance they're looking at is the city's general, um, use by special review permitting procedures, which essentially say, to paraphrase, the use should be consistent with surrounding land uses. And that's fairly broad, so, uh, we've had a few applications lately. We suspect there may be more in the future as cell communications and other telecommunications, uh, increase their density. And staff believes that it would be very helpful to have a set of guidelines, for instance, on setbacks and tower heights and tower designs and things like that, that could be referred to by both, uh, applicants and the Planning Commission and Counsel in reviewing these applications that come pursuant to a special, special use review in areas that are not just industrial areas within the city. So the purpose of this ordinance is to establish a moratorium of, uh, approximately four months and through November to allow staff to develop such guidelines that'll run through the Planning Commission and, uh, then come forward to you for adoption during that moratorium period, to enable us to, I think, have a more orderly review process.
Thank you, Eric. Counselor Greg?
I had two questions here. First, uh, right now, we have presently a permit for a tower. How are we gonna handle that? Cause this moratorium won't affect that permit, right?
The, the application for the permit?
Please.
Right, this moratorium will not affect that application. That application came in before the moratorium, before today. And the moratorium certainly isn't in effect yet. So that application will proceed to be processed the way they have been in the past. It'll, it, it is pending before the Planning Commission. I don't know, Pat, when the Planning Commission is meeting on that next Wednesday, the Planning Commission will take that up and will make a recommendation, a recommendation to Counsel, which Counsel will then consider the way that you always have with respect to the, the, uh, use by special review provisions that exist currently in the ordinance.
Even though we don't have nothing, uh, as far as a guideline, is there a way that we can maybe communicate with these people to kind of lead them to the direction that we're trying to put together, Pat, or city manager?
I, I believe of conversations that we've had with the city attorney, the Public Works Director and myself, there are areas that we can push back a little bit on the, eh, the application that's already been, um, submitted. So we don't have the authority to just not grant it across the board without any reason. There are some reasons that we can provide. And there is some pushback that staff is recommending through the P and Z process to look at some potential better sites that are near the location they're looking at and some items like that. So, um, there are gonna be those discussions, but we're making sure we're staying within the authority we can.
Pat, has the staff's recommendation been put together yet?
Yes, it has been. The recommendation has been prepared and has been sent to the members of the Planning Commission and the.
And I, I think you can go ahead and tell the Counsel what that recommendation was.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Counselors. I, I've recommended, uh, denial of the application, uh, based on several different things. One, one being they want to place it right in, in one of our most prominent gateways. The location that they've, that they've chosen is, is immediately north of the Blanca's Fiesta Restaurant. It'll be 120-foot open lattice tower within 30 feet of Railroad Avenue. It'll be, it'll be, uh, there's, there's certainly, there's certainly some, uh, some issues associated with that and your wishes to, to beautify our gateways. There's vacant property to the west. I've talked to three different property owners. All of them would entertain discussions with the, with the, uh, cell company to place a tower there and get it off of, off of the highway. There was.
I think the proximity to some of the residential use.
Right, even though, even though the, uh, thank you, Heather, the, eh, the area is zoned commercial and, and that use is allowed by special review. The, 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 all the area to the north is predominantly residential and I just, I, I, that's, I didn't think it, it was a compatible use.
So that will work, that recommendation will be, has been presented to, uh, the Planning Commission and to the applicant and that process will work its way through and you eventually will see, uh, the application and the recommendation of the Planning Commission in front of you.
That kind of leads me into my second question, Mayor. And the fact that, uh, in past history, we, we've gone through this, where that tower out there by Burbix was, we denied that and it came back. And, and that is, in a sense, a gateway into our community also. And we, at the end, it looked like we had, uh, egg in our face because we had to come back and find a way how to approve it. So how restrictive can you get, uh, Eric, on something like this? Because you got something through communications that tells you you can only do so much and so much is allowed. Can you probably touch on that?
Well, I, when it's starting to get into the details, I think I would wanna do that as it comes before you. I don't want you to prejudge what's going on with respect to this application, but certainly, the criteria that you have can be applied. And if there are ways in which this application is inconsistent with the location they're proposing it for, that's a basis for denial. I, I will tell you that one of the problems that occurred with the prior application and this, that was also Viero, um, was that we did not, the city did not follow some of the requirements of the Telecommunications Act for its decision. And there was not a written decision based on the record coming out of the Planning Commission or out of Counsel. And that left us in a, in a hard place in terms of defending that decision. So you can bet that this time around, um, the requirements of the Telecommunications Act are gonna be certainly followed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Greg. Counselor Coleman?
Yes, um, I guess my question is, um, to Pat and Heather, as you are reviewing, um, all of these different, uh, items, are you also looking at, into, uh, any, uh, fee increases or anything related to the application process? If, since we're expecting an increase in, uh, cell towers in the future?
No, right now, they're just, they're just being treated with our, with our standard special, uh, review permitting process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. One question that I had, and Counselor Greg touched on this, is, uh, when Viero first came in and wanted to put that tower up, yes, we denied it. And then they came back and reapplied and we, after various, uh, discussions and work sessions, decided that we wanted to have a cell tower that was closed, not an open lattice. So we had quite a bit of say when it came to, uh, the final product that was placed out there and it's actually pretty nice for the most part, e- even though it's in the, in the gateway area. So I think, uh, us having the final say, uh, really should play into what we allow, whether it, the Communications Commission, uh, has a say or not.
It's, it's somewhat strange that this is the same company that went through that whole process and ended up with that monopole with the building below it. And I agree with you, I don't even notice it when I drive by. And yet, this time around, they chose to apply for an open lattice tower again.
I thought, I think one reason, one reason that that doesn't stand out is it's nearly 250 feet off of the highway. Uh, this one that they're proposing now is gonna be, i- it'll be within its own height of the, of the highway and it'll be within, within, uh, just basically our city required setback from Railroad Avenue. It's, it's gonna be much more obvious.
Thank you, Pat. Are there any further questions of Pat or Eric?
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we pass ordinance number one, I mean, number nine, 2014 on first reading. Set it for a public hearing on August the sixth at seven o'clock or soon thereafter.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Counsel? If not, start voting, please. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel. Next up, our committee reports. Anyone have a committee report? Counselor Gillespie?
I was not at the last golf board, uh, meeting. We were in, at CML, I believe. However, I do have an update on some of the, uh, issues at the golf course. We do have a new manager at the golf course running the restaurant. It is Sean Fries. He took over, I believe, last Friday. Uh, I think things are going much better already and hopefully, with a few more changes, it will do even better, so. They are now offering a dinner menu, which should help the restaurant immensely. And I understand we still have a few HVAC issues that, uh, Vendola is going to address in the near future. They need to balance the system for the HVAC. I understand the person that does that has been ill, so hopefully, uh, within the next week or so, we can get that accomplished, so. That's an update on, uh, golf course.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Greg?
I had a comment on that, uh, on Greg's, uh, committee report. And maybe for Eric. When these, when the golf course has a line of credit and for some reason, they decide, well, something happens and they default, who pays for that?
Pursuant to the management agreement that's in place right now with the golf board whereby the golf board is managing that golf course for the city, if they default and the city takes over, the city takes over that liability as well.
Well, how, how can we monitor that, you know? Somebody can run up to $100,000 on a line of credit and then default and. and we're, the taxpayers are stuck with the hundred thousand dollar, you know?
Well, we do have to monitor that, and if, if we think that they're getting up into a credit line that's beyond their ability to deal with it, I think we tell them that they can't, they just can't do that anymore.
And Charlie, we are monitoring that. We watch that very closely. We attend all the golf board meetings. They've had a line of credit every year in the past eight years that I've been on the golf board. So, they are capable of paying off that line of credit every year.
What's it up to now, Greg? Do you know?
Forty-four, roughly forty-four thousand. About thirty thousand of that was to buy out the previous restaurant that was operated there so they could get the liquor license and the tables, the furniture, those types of items. So, it was a unique year in regards to that chunk of money.
Thank you, Councilor Gillespie.
Thank you, Greg.
Councilor Gregel? Anyone else have a committee report?
I don't know if this is a committee report. Do you want me to talk about the teleconference we had with the airport people? For, it's been about maybe a couple of years, we've been having problems with our airline out here ever since Congress passed this, what they call a fifteen hundred hour rule. And we, through discussion at CML, our city manager was visiting with Cortez's city manager, and they're having the same problems. So, they both got together and arranged a teleconference with people from Great Lakes, people from the FAA, people from the county, the airport manager, and people from Cortez. And they had a really lengthy discussion and maybe at this time, maybe, do you wanna say some stuff, city manager, on what, where, where do you think the direction's gone or what was, you know, some conversation on it?
I, I think the phone conference was very important, especially for some that may not be aware of what passed legislation and the regulations that flow out of that at the FAA level, the impact it's having on the air service. And the impact is starting at the smaller airports, but what was very illuminating and very scary at the same time is it will work its way up into the larger airports as well. Also on the phone conference were representatives from senators and congressional offices as well. And it, it's, it's frustrating in that you have legislation that's creating certain things and it's kind of unintended consequences, but is there enough political will to try to fix it versus the FAA, which is an agency that takes the direction from that legislation, passes regulations? And what authority do they have to try to make it work for the industry as well? So, there seems to be kind of a back and forth between those two groups, and in the middle is gonna, is gonna be the airlines and, and the communities that rely on the air services. The information that Great Lakes has provided is that there, there are not very many providers any longer because of some of these changes, and the changes are creating a shortage of pilots essentially is what's going on. It's impacting the requirements to get different levels of, of pilot licensing, and it's making it harder for pilots entering the field. As they pointed out, this is coming at the same time that the job market itself is starting to dry up as well. So, we have a situation where there's anticipated retirements, there's less people coming into the market, and the regulations are making it harder to gain the licensing. It's also making it harder for smaller airports to compete for the pilots. So, it's, it's a very distressing situation. What we learned from Great Lakes is they've had to shut down seventeen communities so far. So, the consequences are dramatic. It's not a matter of increasing prices or, or doing things like that. Some of the consequences are to the level where communities are losing their air service. I think the other part that's important about this conversation is I think a lot of times from a community perspective, when flights are canceled or if they're not as convenient, I think Great Lakes takes a hit on their reputation. But there's a lot going on behind the scenes that, that is causing this. And the impression I receive very clearly is they're trying to do the best they can juggling these situations with less pilots and these different requirements. They've put in some requests that they're hoping will help with the situation if the FAA would approve them and the Department of Transportation. But, you know, when we look at what the information was the city of Cortez offered, they've seen a fifteen to twenty percent reduction in their airport revenue as well as a community confidence issue. And our partners with the county were there to share that that's probably a very similar impact that we're having here in Alamosa. So, it's something that we wanna continue as a city to be there to lend our voice in any way we can. Obviously, the county operates the airport and, and we wanna make sure that we support them as much as we can as they try to tackle this issue. And I think Cortez was very smart in trying to take this, it's not just Cortez, it's not just Alamosa. Every community that uses essential air service is being impacted and it's, it's gonna start moving its way up to the larger airlines as well. Does that about cover a council member?
Sure. Also, the mayor was there, myself and city manager representing the city, and I don't know if the mayor has any comments.
Well, of course, there was a lot of information covered in, in that one hour, and I just so happened to be privy to that. I, I, and the way I looked at it was that Great Lakes basically has an issue with the FAA as far as, as far as making sure that the pilots that they are training are of sufficient or have sufficient hours. One of the things that I thought was funny was, once they reach the fifteen hundred hour mark, they move on to larger planes. They don't wanna small, they don't wanna fly the smaller planes anymore, and so that, that itself is creating a shortage for pilots that are, you know, flying smaller aircraft, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty people. And so, it was very interesting. I, I, but yeah, I think Great Lakes and the FAA have some work to do in, in making sure that a lot of the smaller communities are being serviced. Thank you, Councilor Gregel. Councilor Gillespie?
Yes, did they address why they have a schedule? And I guess they have three flights a day, but they're, sometimes they cancel one flight a day. Why can't they just schedule two flights?
I, I think that's one of the requests they have into the FAA right now. In order to get the essential air service contract, I think they have to have a certain schedule, certain number of flights per day scheduled. One of the requests they have in is instead of it being per day, if it can be by week, that then that might alleviate some of the issues that they're running into with that situation. So, there, there's that, they're trying to help, but then when the mayor talks about the fifteen hundred, what occurred is they can't even hire a pilot now without the fifteen hundred hours. So, before they would hire someone with less hours, they wouldn't be the pilot, they'd be the co-pilot, get the training and then, and move through that, but at this point, they can't even hire until the level that's already wanting to go up to the higher levels. And you have a shortage even at the higher level airplanes. So, that's how the fifteen hundred number's tying into the pilot situation.
Thank you, Heather.
And, and it has affected us, Greg. You know, they've lost a lot of business from the, from the college, you know, 'cause when you're, you need to be somewhere and then plane is canceled, you know, it's, it's no good. But the gentleman from, I forget his name, from Washington DC that was on the line, he sounded real promising that they were, at least this conversation has started something, and they wanna work with the people with Great Lakes. So, maybe it's a starting point and hopefully something will come of it.
We, we need to thank Charlie for being on there and Heather for participating as well. I think it's really important for us to work with the county in any way, shape or form that we can to make sure that air service is maintained. After all, we're gonna build a brand new terminal out there. It'd be a shame to build a new terminal and have not any flights come in here. That, that wouldn't be good at all. So, we need to do whatever we can, council, to make sure that, that we support the county and Great Lakes and whoever else. We need to maintain that air service. Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else with a committee report? Do we have committees that we attend? Just question? Okay. Thank you, council. All right, I, I guess we'll move on with staff announcements.
We had a interesting situation come up late last week in, in regards to county meeting and maybe some potential discussion regarding discussions between commissioners and city council members on the city's desire to have reimbursement for impacts on public safety related to the medical marijuana. I think at this point in time, we're not sure how this confusion has come up. We're not sure if maybe there's a discussion that was just misunderstood, but I would like to send communication to the county to apologize for any confusion we may have created, but it, council does not have any intention of requesting support to our, our police department in regards to medical marijuana. Is that everything sound okay from a council perspective?
Absolutely, yeah. That's, that's great. Thank you.
And I don't know, I don't know how they got, well, where they got the information. It's something that they're dealing with, and mostly it's the medical marijuana, the people they have out there. But other than that, we, we have never said that we should be entitled to any of those taxes. I, I think it, it helps the county out on their part with, with some of those taxes and stuff, so I don't know where they got their information from.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel. Councilor Gillespie?
And apparently, they only heard that from one counselor, so it's definitely not a council decision, so.
And it's an important clarification, I think.
Exactly. It's probably part of a private conversation that, and I mean, that is not a council directive in any way, shape or form. So, definitely apologize to Commissioner Dunn and, and the county commissioners for any misrepresentation any, any single counselor had, but no, there, if they decide to sell, that's their sales tax and more power to them.
I agree with.
Thank you. Any more, Councilor Coleman?
I agree with the other councilors. I don't believe there's not one council member here that has any authority to speak on behalf of the entire city council in regards to demanding anything from anyone. So, I sent out the apologies as well.
Thank you, Councilor Coleman. Stafford, Burtson?
There's a few other staff, but before they come up, I just wanna remind everyone about the calendar, that July twenty-third is our City Services Fair. It's at four-thirty here at Cole Park, and I know staff will be working hard to get our equipment and our vehicles out there, and it's a great opportunity for the, the public to come and get some free food and, and see what tools we use to do our job. And so, everyone is welcome to that and wanted to do that reminder. I also wanted to thank the county and San Luis Valley Federal Bank and our city staff as well for the Fourth of July events. It was, I thought, a great day, the, the parade that is coordinated by the Chamber of Commerce, the county providing some funding for the concert, which was added this year, and then city staff and our sponsor with the fireworks. It seemed to flow really well and I heard a lot of great comments. And so, just wanna thank everyone for their involvement on that. It's kind of what makes a community special, those types of events. And coming up, there's been a lot of news coverage regarding the sale of the Polston property. I didn't know if council wanted me to reach out to that group or to wait to see if they approach us or anything like that. I haven't heard anything from the group, and we can sit and, and wait as they pull their plans together, do the public process, or if you want me to initiate some meetings with them, I can do that as well.
Heather, I'm, I'm, I'm even sure who we're supposed to contact, if we're supposed to contact someone out there. I think the property is still being, they're still trying to decide who, who owes what, or I guess the Key Polston Property, Key Polston Public is a group that's kinda dissolving, and then now it's the healthy living people that are coming in, other corporations, and we have different people that are major contributors. So, whatever, what, what do you think we should do as far as reaching out to them? Do you feel like comfortable enough to go out and visit with them, or who would you visit with if you did?
Can I jump in a second here? The Valley Courier had a real great article on, on that today, and it, it gives direction on how they're gonna pursue. Apparently, the, the land people are gonna pretty much run it with the, and I forgot how it's broken down, but they have, they have a direction where they're going.
Okay.
So, and, and if, in that direction, I don't know if, if the, the visit with the city or the county, I, I know it's, it said something about that they would probably eventually come back and visit with the city and the county and as far as what, I don't know what, so.
I mean, at a minimum, I could just make sure they know that I'm here and available to answer any questions and, you know, help them in, in any way as they move through their public process and planning process and, and those types of things.
Thank you, Heather. Do we have any other, other staff announcements? Heinz?
Heinz, if you wanna come up. We wanted, we're gonna be moving quickly on a GoCo grant, and so I wanted Heinz to get it on your radar before we bring it to you for approval.
During the last month's rec board meeting, also on capital planning, I also had a work session. The safety of the ice rink, the dasher boards, they are deteriorating at quite alarming pace along with the plexiglass. So, that is becoming a hot topic for the board. They need, the board needs constant maintenance, the screws are starting, that stick out, they, they worked themselves back out of the, out of the panels, the panels are coming loose, and there's a, the growing consensus among board members is that something will need to be done sooner than later. They were saying from a parent's point of view, it's a hazard to have the children around the boards that have screws sticking out of them, and then from a coach's point of view, the kids are limited to what they can do, can't do all the proper drills and practices, and it makes the rink smaller than it already is. So, at this point, we're looking at some potential savings and some other projects we got besides the, the tennis courts, and we're looking at using those savings for, we're still working on the dog park, where I think we're looking at probably creating at least one this year, and also applying some of that savings to the cash match that the GoCo application would require, which is ten percent. And just to let you know that, that application is due August twenty-seventh. And also, since there's no guarantee on a GoCo grant that you would get it, we're already working with the SLV Youth Hockey Association of what we need to do, what kind of money we need to put into that ring to make it safe for another year at least, and also look at what would require to replace the dasher boards. We've contacted GoCo, they've sent us a couple of winning applications. The one from Kremling looks the best. In fact, it looks exactly what we need. So, we're gonna take a look at that, and we're going to probably do a public forum and at the August rec board meeting discuss this some more, and at probably the latest will be August twentieth council meeting. If we go forward, there'll be the resolution of support for that application.
And the reason we wanna bring it to you tonight is the application is due the end of August. So, we didn't wanna bring this to you August twentieth and get significant pushback or significant concerns, but we also do wanna have a chance to take it through the rec board so it can be an official recommendation. The other part with this project is there has been a longstanding discussion on if the rink itself needs to be replaced, should it be at that location, a different location. By doing these boards, it doesn't lock us into any of that, it still allows us time to do a public process and evaluate those, and these boards would be able to be used. But seeing that it is a safety issue and the information that Heinz shared that's been presented in the rec board's initial perspective on it, we feel it's probably gonna be one of the priorities coming up in the capital plan. The other priority is the dog park, and Heinz touched on that as well, that we think with the savings, we would be able to do both the dog park and the cash, cash match for this project. So, we just wanted to get this on your radar and make sure there's no significant issues with it from a council perspective.
Thank you, Heather. Councilor Coleman?
I just wanna make a comment. That ice rink is a great added value to the committee, community and the kids as, as a whole in the wintertime, and anything that you can do to secure the safety of those kids is greatly appreciated, and I urge you to just continue in your efforts, and I wish you much success in going in that direction because it adds great value in the wintertime for those kids to have other things to do.
On, you know, on the city side, we have, we have supported the ice rink, the hockey quite a bit over the number of years and getting the lights put up, getting a Zamboni with the help of the Youth Hockey Association, getting a warming hut out there, a hut for the Zamboni, having the local service clubs contribute towards a good, a very nice scoreboard out. out there, so we're not going to let it just fall off the earth, basically, and we're, that's why we're taking the, the safety concern seriously on this one.
Thank you, Council Coleman. Council Hill?
Yes, Mr. Heinz, I'm glad to hear that, that there's funds for the dog park for this year. Do you have a timetable, a rough timetable, one that might be complete?
We're still working on the finalizing and then doing one more, they'll probably come out to the August 12th rec board.
And then following that, it would officially come on your agenda before we do anything, so we would want council approval of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hill. Thank you, Heinz.
We have spent about a month trying to communicate with the public, the need for the voluntary water restriction, so I think it's important to get an update on, on where we are, and the other reason I wanted Pat to provide an update is I just can't say it enough how seriously staff is taking this situation, and that if, if we could do anything, we would, and, and we're wringing our hands waiting on a company that we're just, there's no other company that can do it, we can't change companies, and the response isn't what we need it to be, but I wanted Pat to give an update on where we're at and, and the efforts that we're making in this area.
We have the membranes on site, the membranes have been delivered, we're, we, we can't install them until GE makes some, some process changes to our, to the code that, that operates, the, the controls in the plant. We're, we're having a hard time getting them to give us the priority that we think we need, and we've been in nearly daily contact with them since the middle of May, so we're, we're still confident, we're still hopeful that the membranes will be installed and will be operating at full capacity by the end of the month. That's, that's, that's our goal, but like, like Heather said, that, that does depend, it's out of our hands. We're, we're waiting, we're waiting for a response from, from GE and Xenon, the membrane manufacturers. And as far as an update on construction, we'll be beginning hard construction on Eighth Street next Monday. We'll start notifying residents tomorrow and Friday, making sure that they know what's going on, and, and we'll, we'll be keeping them in the loop, we'll give them different, different options to communicate with us, email lists, things like that, where I will send out, every couple, three days, I'll send out a, you know, just a little update to, to everybody that's, that's interested, how, how the project's going, how, if we're still on schedule, behind schedule, things like that. We have begun our drainage project on Sunset, hopefully that'll be done in about a week, and that's all I have for right now, so.
Council Gregor?
Yes, Pat, do you have any numbers as how, how the voluntary water restrictions are going?
How, are they having an effect?
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's kind of hard to tell, because our use, our use goes up and down with, with weather and with temperature and things like that, but I think it's, I think it's safe to say we're saving about 100 or 150,000 gallons a day. It's, it's, and every little bit helps. We, our staff, Farron Hall and Roy Sanchez, they need to be commended, they've been, they've been working nights, they've been working weekends, they've been changing up all of their operational schedules and plans, keeping everything, keeping everything going, and, and we're, we're, we're getting through, and we're just hoping to get the response out of GE so we can get back to full capacity.
Thank you. And then another question I have for you is, is the goal still to be done with the Eighth, Eighth Street part of that project by the time school starts?
That is the goal, yes. I, I can't be as confident as Ken was with 255 days, but that is our goal.
Thank you, Council-
I had a couple of questions before you leave, Pat. It's on West Eighth. Did we ever, I know we were short of money as far as completing it all the way to Monroe, did we ever take a look at that again and give some kind of direction? Because I, I know we were going to discuss it, and, and then it never-
Well, what, what I, I did discuss with the contractors, how, how they thought scheduling-wise that would, that would work with school starting and things like that, and they, they didn't feel, mainly the, the concrete contractor didn't feel he'd be able to make it this, this late in the year.
Okay. And a second question, the individual that has those two apartments out there, that built those two apartments, he was not supposed to do any kind of work out there until we finally decided what we were going to do with Monroe.
That's correct.
Well, right now, I think they've done some excavation out there, they've got a big pile of dirt, and I, I spoke to city manager, and I thought that nothing was supposed to be happening out there, period, moving dirt or whatever, that's a sign of some kind of a progress on something, and until we resolve this other issue.
What they're doing is building the retention pond that was required as a part of their project, that, that retention pond was their public land dedication for the project, and we needed that pond to be built to accept the drainage from Eighth Street. So they're just, they're completing the project that they started last year, it's part of the, of the apartment project.
I saw some excavations, but I didn't know what-
Yeah, yeah, I can understand the confusion.
Thank you, Council Gregor. I had, I had a question specific to the participation by the school district, have we had any communication with the school district at all in the improvements that we were hoping they would make, or any of that?
We've had-
My impression is that some individual council members may have had some conversations, and there doesn't seem to be much interest there at all. The letter will go out tomorrow, that, and just will document the purpose of why we wanted to meet with them, what we had hoped to accomplish, and that if there's anything we can do to help them as they evaluate that, the project, to let us know.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Heather.
And we, we are including considerations for a new entrance, for a drop-off loop while we're building the street, just in case they do decide to do that in the future, that'll already be there for them.
Thank you, Pat. Heather, anyone else? All right. That does it for staff announcements. We'll move on as the local licensing authority, we have Consent Calendar B. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar B contains routine items that are under council's jurisdiction as the local licensing authority. Council may remove a council calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we're going to be considering the SLV Brewing Company temporary modification of premises for search and rescue event August 16th, 2014. Counsel? Questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve Consent Calendar B, specifically SLV Brewing Company temporary modification of premises for search and rescue event August 16th, 2014.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, counsel. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up is counsel comment. Council Gregor?
I'll start, I guess. I got, I got a couple. First, and I don't know if, maybe this should have been discussed in committee reports, but I attended the Veterans Coalition of the San Luis Valley, and that letter that I put in your, in your packets that the governor sent out, and what they're really doing is they're trying to find ways how to help veterans, and they're kind of getting this coalition together and stuff, so it looked pretty promising, there was a great attendance there, and they will start having these meetings, I believe either monthly or quarterly, they haven't decided, but it was, it was a really good, good deal. Secondly, I sent Heather a video on the letter that the mayor got on Gary Boyce, the letter he sent.
Yes.
Well, they put out it together, they put out this video, and I don't know if, if the city manager got an opportunity to look at that, but it, maybe she should turn, send it out to the rest of the council so they can look at it, and it describes the project that he wants to do and how he's going to do it, and it's, it's a pretty amazing video that he put together. So that's something that, you know, I know the, the whole valley's gearing up for that, so we're looking for a long discussion, a long fight, I guess. And last, on, on Facebook, there was an individual that, I don't know, and I don't know how to put this, kind of went after the, the leadership of this community, stating that we are not out there creating jobs, and we're not, we're just, all we're doing is we're funding a nonprofit to create jobs, and I think that's totally wrong, you know, sure we do, we do fund development resources, and we fund ACID, and even the, the group that Rusty sits on the bedroom-
Marketing district.
The marketing district, we're trying every which way but lose to, to find jobs and create jobs, and I think that the person that, that made that comment is wrong, you know, we've tried it year after year, we, sure, we spend money, we, we spend a lot of money on economic development, trying to stir something up and try to get something going, you know, and I, I, you know, I don't think that's right, you know, because he, and I don't know if you guys took it personally, I took it personally, because he's talking about us, the leadership of the community, and I, you know, I've been here for 30 years, and, and we've worked every which way with, with, we partnered with everybody to try to find ways on how we could create jobs, you know, and it, it's not something that we take lightly, and it's something that, it's, every year we discuss it, every year we're trying to do something to create jobs, and it's, I don't think the, the comments and the remarks were correct, and I don't know if the city manager wanted to say something on that, because I, it just bothered me.
I, I think Mr. Gregor's correct in that I think it was a little bit off the mark on what's actually being done by the city, and I think under the council's leadership, not only have we provided funding to the organizations to take the lead on economic development for some of these items, but the, allow staff to set up our time appropriately to be able to help with development as well, and I can tell anyone that there's a significant amount of work that Public Works does when we get different developers asking questions and making sure we give them timely information, or we tell them where there's flexibility and, and what we could recommend, and, and those type of items. I know that I've been contacted several times with ACID when there's a confidential developer coming to town and they need certain information, and, and making sure we're there to provide anything that they need, if, if it's a letter or if it's information. This last year, we've also reorganized to where we are focusing more on economic development. Pat has spent significant amount of time learning the Buxton software and pulling the data out there, creating the reports that we are then now taking to the retailers and the jobs and, and, and all of those types of things, and then we've also been doing training, so there's a significant amount of work that's been going on, some of it's because it's economic development and it's confidential, and when you're dealing in this field, you might get 20 nibbles and only one bite, and not everything ends up in the public for the work that's going into it. The other item related to the comment was if we were business friendly, and I think conversations with this individual later flushed out that his reference was referring to our, our website. Well, as we know from the work session, that's something staff has identified and has been working on, so there has been significant amount of work in this area, and I think it's unfortunate to have discord in our community that's not based on information, because when you have developers looking at Alamosa, they're going to look to see how we get along as a community and if we're business friendly, so hopefully in the future, certain comments will be more selective and, and based on better information.
I, you know, I, I'll just make a small comment on that. I think Heather, Randy, Pat, the entire council is, is very business friendly and, and very economically developed minded as far as that goes, but when somebody puts something on Facebook, I don't really hold a lot of credence to that. I mean, if somebody has to come and tell council something, we have an open forum, we have a transparent form of government, please come and tell us face to face, and, and not an underhanded backdoor kind of thing, where we're wondering what, what you're up to and, and what your motivation is, because we're here to represent the people of our community, we are doing what we can to make sure that we are bringing clean industry in here. We just had the unmanned aircraft folks over here not too long ago, they're seriously looking at the valley, Sowatch, I believe, just signed a letter, many counties are signing letters of support to bring those folks, that's a multi-billion dollar industry, and if we could get ahold of that, that would be great, but those are not the only things that we're looking at, there are other things that, that we've been considering, your attendance at the national conference, Buxton, we're doing what we can. I mean, let's face it, sometimes we're at the mercy of the market, and being that, we can't force people to come here, we can give them some incentives, that's something council has to decide and look at, but I think we're doing whatever we can to make sure that the people in our community are held first, and we're open for anybody that wants to come into the community and, and help us with jobs and recruitment of that sort, but yeah, I, I don't put a lot of credence in Facebook, I, I don't even have a Facebook account because I, and I don't have friends, because I don't want 3,000 friends, but anyway, that's, that's my spiel on the thing, counsel, anyway. Counsel comment? Anyone else? Council Gillespie?
Yes, I'd like to thank our fire chief, Chief Don Chapman, he came out to my office last week, Bureau Reclamation, and gave a safety talk on fire safety to our office for our toolbox meeting. As always, Don's very professional, gave an informative talk, and upon short notice, came out and did an excellent job, so I'd like to thank him personally, so, thank you, Don.
Thank you, Council Gillespie.
Also, I'd like to thank Parks and Rec, they've been out at the ranch lately, mowing the, I guess weeds and grass down, it looks very nice, it's a big improvement to that area, so thank you, there too also, Heinz, thank you.
Thank you, Council Gillespie. Council Coleman?
I just want to wish, have some well wishes to Jim and his family and everybody, and hope that he has a speedy recovery, and also, one of our council members had a birthday last week, and I just wanted to make sure we told him happy birthday, Councilman Gregor.
Oh, we need to sing happy birthday to him, don't we? Congratulations, com-
That's executive session.
Stop. I, I, I also wanted to talk about Jim a little bit, and, and yeah, I think there's a basket that goes out to him on Friday, we'll keep him in our, our thoughts, and hopefully he will be back soon, Jose, and I, I think, I, you know, I, I'm really glad this system didn't decide to go down right now, because with, Jose can handle it, I, well, that's great, I'm, I'm glad, you should have been here at the last meeting. Anyway, Heather, I want to thank you for, for, for taking a, a lead on, on the benches in our park and, and all the mud that's underneath there, I think staff is wise in putting concrete under them, it's sure going to help a, a lot of the people that enjoy the park from getting mud all over everything, so thank you for that, I appreciate that. And anyone else? If not, we'll move on to executive sessions, we have the need for executive sessions that pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, CRS-24-6402, A, E, A, and F, so we've got-
Three of them.
Three reasons, and so I'll entertain a motion to go on to executive session, counsel.
I'll attempt that motion. I'll make the motion that pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, in parentheses four, in parentheses A, to discuss potential real estate acquisition, and CRS 24-6-402, in parentheses four, in parentheses E, to discuss matters subjected to negotiations, develop strategies for negotiations and instruction negotiations. Specific topic to be discussed in executive session is the Monroe Street project. Item number two, pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, in parentheses four, in parentheses A, to discuss potential real estate acquisition of the sick and twisted property. And then finally, item number- And then, finally, item number three pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 in parentheses four and parentheses F for personnel matters, evaluation of city manager.
Counselor Gregor, I, it was before I came in, I think I came in late, but I believe Heather had wanted to add another topic. It would be pursuant to 24-6-402 sub four sub A to discuss potential interest in real estate acquisition on the Motorway Building as well.
Okay. I'll add that to my motion also. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Second. I have a motion and a second. Start voting, please. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. And we will be moving into executive session. After executive session, we will be coming back into regular session. There will be no business discussed. We will just have adjournment. Thank you.